I'm gonna make a list, that's what's gonna happen. Share favorites. Just the library. I can jump on my. If you need me to jump out of my house.
Use another one camera. Okay, do not have my gals. So please stand for our pledge allegiance being the pride of Spittle.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, the good, liberty and justice for all.
Not only do I say welcome to our first regular meeting for October 2025 with the Village of Boston's Board of Trustees, but also say welcome back to the Boston's Public Library. Our home is back, at least temporarily. We'll have some asbestos mitigation closure time coming up probably November at some point, but want to kind of get used to this again to get everybody in the swing of things. It's a little different to have everybody more than three feet off of us. So we do miss you all over there, but we are happy to be here and thanks to the library for hosting us again. And they're actually, they're meeting upstairs right now, Board of Trustees. So hi, guys.
Remembering your room.
Yeah, absolutely. And you can see actually behind veranda, the part of the lower level addition. Looking at the camera right now, so you can see where there used to be windows, basically. It's now an addition behind us, kind of a history room with meeting room capabilities. They call it the history room. So come in, come in and see the changes to Boston's Public Library when you get an opportunity. Let's go to the agenda and ask for a motion that the minutes of September 22nd, 2025 meeting be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa.
Second.
Trustee Baskin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, no presentations tonight. Public comment on agenda items only, three minutes per speaker. Again, agenda items only. If you're on Zoom, I don't think we popped up that window to see if anybody's raising their hand. So if you're there, now would be the time to raise your hand. Anybody in the building that would like to speak? We have the podium over there. We're keeping it there because we are just using this one microphone tonight. See how it picks up. It seemed to do a good job at Villa Charles, so we're testing it out here, but we want to keep it close enough just in case. So anybody want to speak? Seeing none here, seeing none there. Let's proceed. Can I get a motion that Daryl St. Louis be appointed to the position of mechanic?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Raymond, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that Peggy Crawford be granted permission to utilize Wizwell Park on October 15th, 2025 from 7:00 PM until 9:00 PM? The first annual Charlie Kirk Day, a permit will be issued upon proof of insurance which has been received.
Oh, we have proof of insurance.
Well, first, can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, sure, Dr. Steve Price Bush?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
Can that be emailed out to everybody?
Yeah, to everybody who has fiscal copies today. I know you got it kind of late today.
I got it very late in my office, just before I left the office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Take one passing around. But $2 million in the aggregate and Bill's also buying this, these certificate holders are also insured, so that is where our insurer requires. Any other discussion besides that?
I thought it would be important, Carla emailed us earlier responding to one of Ben's questions, but that was also a question I had. There seems to be some confusion about this. I think it'd be wise to clarify on this and other sort of applications like this, that we have language that specifies why we're voting on this at this point, right? It's kind of re-proving the process that they have gone through, provided insurance, filled out the application, but also like for some reason folks think it's a sponsored village event. And I think it'd be wise to say, you know, there was four items you think you had in your email to us, right?
Yeah, but I can't access it right now.
That said, the motion does say it's for Peggy Crawford to grant permission not to the Village.
Well, I think more specific language would be helpful because even though that's on the agenda, we had a number of people reach out saying, it appears that they think that it is a sponsored event of the village, so. I would just ask if we can make those adjustments.
Do you have that?
I'm trying to pull.
Which adjustments exactly?
A disclaimer that it's not a village sponsored event.
I don't know that we have to do all of it, but mainly that I'm.
Well, I think there was some confusion. I don't know what methodology, what mechanism is the best way to dispel that, but I mean, other than, you know, discussing it now that, you know, just as with No Kings or any other event that would be held in a park that's not necessarily sponsored by the village, it's just authorized by the village for use of village property.
Okay, so you think that's sufficient? I just want to make sure folks aren't confused by that. Well, at the very least, if we want to, maybe we should just read it in, I'll read it in full if anybody, I do, I'm sorry. So just some clarifications for the public. As board members, we are, you know, we took a note that pulled the constitution, which protects freedom of speech. Village is allowed to have time, place and manner restrictions on assemblies. Permit requirements in the code are in the code. And then a vote for or against this motion is not affirmation or declination of the content of the assembly, but rather the process has been or has not been followed. And the last item again is just that this is not a village sponsored event, much like No Kings and stuff like that. I just, I don't want there to be some confusion as it, as we saw in communication today that there is some, so at least verbally it's there.
Okay. Just as I sent a couple of emails about this, I was thinking about how it would play out if there was no insurance, and Carla did speak to that to some degree. Obviously, people, and as far as we knew, there wasn't going to be for this vote, but and hopefully by tomorrow, but we got it, so that's great. So it's a little moot, but just, but the motion was put forward that we should approve this with the condition that insurance be obtained. And this was an entity where we hadn't received insurance before, so it was unclear to me if it was going to happen or not. And then thinking about, okay, what if insurance is not obtained, but it's advertised? And what does that, how does that play out? So people obviously can go to the park and assemble if they want to, but what does it mean to have a permit and or not to have a permit? And I guess my assumption was if a group of people meet in the park without a permit, I assume they would not use, for example, village electricity or that kind of thing? Or would they be still, is there any restriction? Is there any value to having a permit versus not having a permit to have an event in a park? And I was thinking, oh, maybe it's electricity, or maybe you're not allowed to have a standing sign if you don't have a permit or what?
The general mark rules are dawn to dusk, so this may go a little bit beyond sundown, for instance. So technically they'd have the right to stay there, which they wouldn't have otherwise if we weren't going to force that, so I think there's that. And the general, you know, permission and permit for usage. So if somebody else was trying to do something counter inside the park or in the pavilion or something like that, they would technically have the ability to say we have a permit to use.
Right.
Yeah, so priority in that situation, absolutely. We try to ask people to share if they can, if they're not using all of the park or pavilion or something like that, but if it comes down to a noxious scenario, then it's a shared situation requested.
But if, so for example, the No Kings rally that was before, if a group of people want to, in the middle of the day, have a little concert with somebody playing guitar in the pavilion.
Well, that came up in the last one.
Exactly.
And what ended up happening was that we were first trying to figure out what the existing permit for Farmer's Market was entailing and if there was going to be a conflict at all in that.
Right, so they did it after that ended.
And then when the request for insurance, which was the general policy of the village, not a law, but a policy of the village to request that, then that seemed to be a game changer for the organizer of that one. So I can't speak more to that than to say that seemed to divert that.
Well, the permit says insurance is required, quote unquote, so it certainly seems like
It's a policy requirement, though.
A requirement, yeah.
It's not in the code.
So it didn't seem like it was optional, but apparently, like Carla, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but if that person chose to proceed, they could have without a permit and without insurance and just had a little concert in the park, there wouldn't have been, it would have been okay to do that.
I think our insurer may have some issues with that if it's an organized effort, and that's, I think, who would still piss in the first place on the village for the $2 million in the first place on any usage, but go ahead.
I mean, anybody can go to the park and play guitar, so.
Could they plug into village power for electricity for a speaker?
I don't figure out how, I don't know how we're gonna stop it. I mean, we did in the pavilion turn off power during non-usage because we had some folks that were taking leisure at using it that, you know, were definitely driving up our bills over there, and so we did ask DPW to turn it off unless we had a permit active.
Oh, okay, so it is the default is it's off unless someone has a permit, then it could be turned off.
As we now have reestablished the park, we'll be working on exactly how to handle those aspects, like when the light posts come in, I believe there will be a lockbox in each lamppost for the power.
You put, I believe they're gonna be in a separate circuit anyways, so you could just shut off the breaker.
Yeah. But you get the point that there'll be a protection at least in that aspect of it, yeah.
Right, so that would come with a permit, they would add that. So if you don't have a permit, you wouldn't get access to electricity.
Most likely correct here, right? We, again, we're, when it comes to Wizwell Park, we're reeducating right now ourselves. We have a general policy with usage of parks and by organized group requiring insurance because our insurer has asked for that, that's the policy. So we've universally requested that, and this organized event has that. So that's been met here. We're trying to refine exactly what it means in Wizwell Park. We know what it means in Kelly Park because it's pavilion, and that's a more specified area that you've read out basically over there.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the village pay the amount of $12,100 to the Boston Area Recreation Commission for the attached contract and as stated in the 2025-2026 budget and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract?
I'll make the motion.
Justice Fandesa. Trustee Baskin, discussion.
My only question here is, it seems like this is late, like this should have happened like five months ago.
Nora asked us where it was, we realized it hadn't been paid, so we got it out to the agenda desk as quickly as we could.
Yeah, I think this happened last year too. So BACC, has that been paid?
I can't speak to that right now, we can speak about it in executive session if you'd like later on.
Okay, I guess, yes, if that's what's required, I don't know.
Under the circumstances, yes, it would be.
All right, how about Friends of the Keteros?
Is that one of my sure odds, John, on that one?
Um, I'm not sure, some of them have been done, some of them.
Go easy hasn't tapped us on the shoulder for that one yet, so maybe we'll reach out to MCOs.
Yeah, it'd be great if there's some maybe automatic routine that once the budget is approved and these funds approved, that it, you know, there's a, because I'm sure they need the funds, they may be waiting for you just to send it, or they don't know the process of requesting it, or who knows what, but I'm sure they'd appreciate it before, you know, this point in the year.
Well, normally it would be in January, I forget, back in the old days, or even April. Really, it's been a shifting thing over the years, when it gets paid out. It used to be part of actually too, I think, the April meetings, and now we are trying to align them with our fiscal year because that's where it belongs realistically, June 1st.
Yeah, so I think, prior to you being here, I think it was June 1st, or June and July.
Well, no, when elections change and the organizational meeting change and all that stuff, that's where it got a little flaky about how we handle it. So we're still getting used to it a little bit.
The budget hasn't changed, but okay.
But all in favor of the motion, see?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the Village of Boston Spa pay the amount of $12,500 to the Boston Area Seniors for the attached contract and as stated in 2025-26 budget and authorize the mayor to execute the contract?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Price Bush? Trustee Fandesa, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the Village of Boston Spa accept the bids offered from Auctions International for two separate auctions that both ended this past week and authorize the mayor to finalize slash execute any related paperwork?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa. Trustee Baskin, discussion.
The only question, lot number three was blanked out, is there, why was that?
We didn't, when I seconded that word, we accepted the other thing, I'll get to that one.
All right, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carryers? Can I get a motion approving the attached tower structural license agreement between a new, between new singular wireless PCS LLC, DBA, AT&amp;T Wireless in the Village of Boston Spa and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement? Trustee Fandesa.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion.
So singular is AT&amp;T?
Correct. I had to go back in memory banks for that one myself when I was looking at that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving?
Can I make one question, one comment?
Well, we just approved it, but okay.
Yeah, no, not to change that, but it seems as if they're still in the early stages of even designing it and.
It's designed, all they need to know now is the specific spacing that the carriers will need, and so now we're gonna get the remainder of the contracts out, get bidding done on that, so that they can get that information. The big problem is the pole itself, and so they're gonna order the pole once this is signed out.
Okay, because I'm not an engineer, but I did some layperson research and it looked like you can get.
Did you go on AI?
You can get, no, I didn't, didn't use AI, but you can get a circular ray potentially reducing the height of the tower. I remember asking, who was it? Don Rhodes, he didn't reply to that question specifically, but.
I thought that was raised like several months ago and there was.
There was, there was no.
It could be interference at the same level, I think is what the answer was, to be honest.
I didn't hear, see that, but, okay.
Okay, can I get a motion approving change order number three for USG Water Solutions related to the delay costs related to the John Street Tower exterior painting? These costs are to be absorbed by the carriers through pending agreements. This motion authorizes the mayor to execute the change order.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin. Trustee Fandesa, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to have village administration center request for quotes for telephonic language interpretation services to the following vendors? Language Line Solutions, Geneva Worldwide Incorporated and TransPerfect Translations International Incorporated.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin.
I'll second.
Trustee Fandesa, discussion. You made me say all that, didn't you, Ben?
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I just want to say that there are certain specifications we should put in the quote. I've been talking to the language people at the state level and I can, I'll send them to the board and to gen what can be on there in terms of, for example, 24-hour access and what are their training requirements, things like that.
So you're gonna translate for gen, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm gonna suggest some, some, well, assuming.
You should.
Speaking coordination.
Got it, anyway.
So give that information.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion accepting resignation of John Battenfield from the planning board? Trustee Fandesa.
Second.
I will give it to Trustee Price Bush by just a, ten of a second, I think that was. Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you, John, for your service.
Thank you, John. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the attached memorandum of understanding between the Capitol Region Transportation Council and the Village of Boston Spa for the village-wide traffic calming master plan, including $7,500 for village matching funds and authorizing the mayor to execute memorandum of understanding? Justice Fandesa, trustee Baskin, discussion.
So they're gonna do the study portion of it first and then implementation is going to be done by who then?
That's what a part, I think.
The study?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there is a citizen committee that's part of this whole plan, so we could get that mechanism started and.
Well, I'm just happy we're getting you at a contract right now because this is about to pencil, so at this point, I'm just wanting to get it signed and into them so that we can move this finally forward because we are very late.
Yeah, no, we should. There are some deadlines with, you know, milestones, so they're gonna want to see us move forward right after this is signed.
I've talked to Cindy and I made sure she knew that this was coming tonight, that I had to wait for it from the board, she was fine with that.
So it'd be great if we could publicize, you know, this committee openings and the process involved, you know, for committees, just as we do with others.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the attached spectrum business agreement with the Village of Boston Spa for a Lowell Street pump station phone line for $30 per month for 36 months contingent on the inability of Ring Square to provide the necessary service for that location? This motion authorizes the mayor to execute the agreement if it is determined that the inability exists. Trustee Fandesa.
Second.
Trustee Raymond? Was that second?
Check.
Check. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to the motions slash resolutions related to the attached resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment at a cost of up to $1,236,000 and the issuance of $1.1 million serial bonds of the Village of Boston Spa, Saratoga County for the purchase of one back truck, one street sweeper, two dump trucks, one loader and one pickup truck with plow. This resolution formalizes authorization which is needed for the closing of loan for USDA requirements, as you may remember, this is three years ago. Now we're just making sure we have all the ATs, Frost and Ice dotted. Carla will take us through this process.
Just like any other bond process, there's a resolution out there that is subject to permissive referendum. The resolution authorizes you to bond, to finance up to $1,100,000. It's, yep, $1,236,000. Doesn't mean you're going to bond up to that, just means that you have the authorization to do so. So what'll happen is you'll adopt the resolution, it has to be at least four members to adopt the resolution. Once the resolution is adopted, there's a 30-day period at which the public can petition to put this out for a vote. After that 30-day period is done and there's no petition, if there's no petition, there's a 20-day estoppel period where people can bring an action against the village, saying you didn't have the authority to do that, you have the authority to do this, I'm letting you know. So in 50 days, give or take, you will be able to move forward with the closing USDA.
Would you like us to read anything, do anything, waive anything?
You all have the resolution, correct? Do you want me to read the three pages of it?
No, we've received all these vehicles, right?
Except for the dump trucks.
I still haven't.
Correct, so that is what held us from being able to close the loan in this situation.
So we can do, we can close the loan even though we don't have the dump trucks?
No, we're getting the dump trucks soon, that's why we're triggering this now. We may actually get the dump trucks just before the closer. We do have the money, we can float for the time being, but then we'll get the loan closed and get the reimbursement and the grant money that we were afforded, this about $135,000 grant money will be coming as part of this. So this was a very advantageous loan back in 2022 that we work with USDA on. It sounds like we're willing to waive the reading of the entirety of the resolution, and so I will ask for a roll call vote for the approval of the resolution and after Carla says something else.
You just need to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Can I get a motion approved resolution?
I'll make the motion, second.
Trustee Baskin, Trustee Raymond, roll call.
All right. Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Fandesa?
Yes.
Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
And Chappel Hurd says yes.
Yeah.
It's still good. Okay, same issue, same general process here for resolutions related to the attached resolution authorizing the issuance of $942,000 serial bonds for the Village of Boston Spa, Saratoga County, New York for the purchase of a Sopin pumper fire truck. Again, resolution formalizes the authorization needed for the closing of the loan for USDA requirements. Anything you want to add to that?
Same exact process, three plus one.
Dispense with the reading?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa, everybody makes a motion to, for approval of the resolution?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, second staff.
And we've received this, Nico?
No, again, we are on the cusp of doing it, that's what actually triggered us to look at everything, talk to USDA, say, hey, what do we need to do? They said, hey, do you have this? And we're like, well, we may not have done this part of it, so let's make sure we're doing it, we're doing it. And roll call vote please, one more time.
Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Fandesa?
Yes.
Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Rossi?
Oh, yes! And mayor's announcements, we are currently working on getting the last of the information into Delaware Engineering for cost assessment and other things, plans, you know, preliminary concept plans for DPW redo, so that is coming down the pipe pretty well. Paving, not to steal Shaun's thunder, we are on the last, last gasp of paving by the village, but there may still be one more paving to be done on East High Street for the whole CHPE debacle that occurred on there. So we're trying to figure out with Peckham paving, what timing they want to do with that. They discussed maybe waiting till after the winter, I'm of the mindset we're gonna take what we can get when we can get it right now because, you know, they're gonna be gone at that point, CHPE, so, you know, would they bother looking back at that point? So might as well get the paving done when we can get it done and get the road chored up a better way underneath. I know they did some good work on High Boulevard on that one chunk that had taken pretty badly in Chin last week. And we apologize for no notice on that one, we had gotten very, very late notice, that Peckham even wanted to come in to do that chunk of it, and so they came in, they did it all in one fast swoop, that, one day, basically, so thanks to them for being efficient on that. The end of milling is tomorrow, the paving itself will be done on Tuesday and Wednesday. Shaun will probably read off the streets coming up, so I won't steal his thunder on that. But we did go over the budget this year as we had suggested in discussions for paving, but we did probably have some personnel savings with some of the changed personnel going on inside DPW, so not really the way you want it to happen, but everything balances out in the end a little bit, and so we're.
It's not shocking to go over budget.
I'm aware. But, you know, CHIPS has kept us afloat pretty well lately, so.
And if you want to name the streets, you didn't actually include it in my email.
It is South Street, Rollins Street, is it Kerry Court, am I saying? Hold on now, now I'm challenging my own head here. Adams Circle, Lexington and Franklin, and Clonohills is tomorrow's milling, and then Wednesday's paving, so basically anything that milled on a Tuesday is being paved on the next Tuesday, this go around. We tried to pace this also because we had a little bit of a miss last time, we tried to do too much at once, so we're hoping that we got it right with our folks this go around. And it is Kerry Court, I was right, Kerry Court, Rollins and South Street was today and then next Tuesday for paving, Lexington, Franklin and Adams Circle on Wednesday and Wednesday. And again, milling is a quick process for closure. During the milling, you can't use the road, but that's usually, they go straight through, when they're done with it, they'll reopen the road. Paving, that's the day you gotta plan on moving it to your car somewhere else, if at all possible, so don't park on that street, don't plan on parking on that street until the next morning after some curing is done with the paving. As you saw, the USDA loans, dump trucks are almost here, which is very necessary after three years of waiting, because our older dump trucks are just a debacle mess right now, so for plowing season, it's gonna be important to get those in, and Scott Kearns has been working hard to get those in. The pumper truck, I believe they are going down in a few days down to Pennsylvania to take a test on it to see how it is. We'll be doing owing soon, I checked with Melissa, make sure we got funding we needed to cover for the time being, she said we're fine, so we're good there. She's also looking at possibly switching banks from NYclass to a bank that actually houses NYclass funds, but actually insures those funds, whereas I guess we learned that when they went up to with the Nikon event, that NYclass does not do insuring to that degree. And so not only would you get maybe a tenth of a point better from this bank, but also the insurance coverage as well, or at least partial insurance coverage. So we're looking into that, so if you see that motion come down the pipe, don't be surprised down the line, that would be helpful and protective. Met with our library board, they're doing a. Met with our, uh, library, uh, board. Um, like, they're doing a knockout job and Mary's going to tell us some stuff coming up about just how good it's going around here and how special they are, library board of trustees. So, uh, we'll stay tuned for that. I won't steal that thunder either. And, uh, aside from that, after we're done with paving, we're going to get a lot of discrete jobs that just didn't get done, uh, you know, during this year, like putting up the rest of the speed signs, fixing the ones that still need to be fixed, uh, and uh, preparing for next year, uh, getting the trees fully done on the one side of the street on Milton Avenue where we didn't get all the trees yet, or the ones that are dying further to the north. So we've got lots of stuff for DPW to do over the next, uh, months. And they're just looking for that, um, you know, window to do it in, which is usually early winter and then early spring afterward. So, uh, that's what's coming up. And that's all from me. I'll give you the treasure report very quickly since I did have it on my screen at one point recently here. And there it is. Uh, utility billing and taxes. Customers, uh, whose properties are inside the Village of Boston Spa can still pay their utility bills either by mailing or dropping off a payment to the village office. We also have a link on the village website to pay by credit card. That, uh, costs you about 3% extra or thereabouts. Any balances for residents whose properties are outside the Village of Boston Spa were re-levee to the town that their property is in town of, such as, uh, Malta, uh, Boston, or Milton, or City of Saratoga, uh, in early October. Uh, any balance on taxes due to the Village of Boston Spa, uh, they've been re-levee to Saratoga County and will be billed through them on January 1st. So basically, the only thing you can pay still, you know, is in-village utility bill, uh, for the time being, uh, and then eventually those may get re-levee as well. So, uh, you'll be penalized, you get interest fees and everything else if, once the county takes it over, uh, from the county as well. So for those that don't know what a re-levee is, the county and/or town make us whole with what is not paid to us. They put it on the taxes and collect it through the tax process at the county and town level. So that's, uh, how that all works. Uh, there is a list of revenues, uh, in this and bankrupt ancillations of the month of September were emailed to the board on October 10th, uh, last week. There is that. Ready that? Go forth with the liaison report number one.
All right, um, just wanted to talk about a couple of things. Uh, definitely want to congratulate the Business Association for an outstanding car show. Um, this is like the 20-something year. What is it?
23rd.
23rd. Um, and, you know, considering that there could have been rain, a lot of people showed up, a lot of the people that showed their cars and, um, it was really busy downtown. So always thankful for what they do. Um, they're shifting their focus to now prepare for Small Business Saturday, which is November 29th, uh, where we encourage people to do a lot of their holiday shopping locally. Um, that's with the BSPPA. And then, uh, the it's, we call it revitalized Boston Spa, but it's our BOA, uh, project. Um, there will be a public workshop on November 20th from 6 to 8 p.m. and that will be at the Solar Building. And we would love to have the public come and, uh, engage with us and share their opinions and thoughts. So.
And, uh, I know you guys are working on the.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Um, so one of the things that we're able to do, I sent it to the board for, for them to look at. Um, we are able to use some of the, the grant money, uh, towards some like marketing materials. A way we can do that is to, um, basically what I requested and the committee supported it was that we'd requested a rap to be designed to cover, uh, the ricket site that's currently, you know, still in remediation. It looks like a hot mess. So, uh, it's very similar, um, sort of style of what they're doing at the Capitol right now. They have on the fencing a graphic designed sort of cover. Um, and it, it looks nice. I think it looks very nice and at least let us screen it a little bit. Um, and so it's great that it's coming out of those funds. We don't have to use any of our money for that. Um, and I will be putting it on the agenda for, um, next meeting. I probably should save this for new business, but I just was curious if people were mostly okay with it so that we can start getting approval through DDC, which I know is a process, so.
I thought it was a good-looking scenario, uh, not too modern, not too, you know, rustic.
It's fine. It's not like the homiest, most friendly kind of thing, but I don't know what they're.
They're at that fence height though, but what do you mean?
I don't know what their graphics.
Yeah.
Plus, it's, you're also driving.
Pictures of the village.
No, there's pictures of the village on there.
Are there behind it?
In the 1807, I think.
There's that iron spring on it.
Oh, I thought it just had the date, 1807 and.
No, no, no. It has our buildings. It has the Chocolate Factory Tower. I'm pretty sure.
I didn't see it well.
Yeah, and, and you've got to, when people finally see it and it'll be in the attachments next meeting, is you got to think about the scale. People are mostly driving at that part of the road. There are some folks that are pedestrian, but we're really mainly focused on, uh, traffic that is driving through. So, um, that'll be next, next meeting. So.
Mary?
Okay. And as you had said, the library is very busy. Um, they receive a $50,000 grant from Sturts, which is going to go towards a new team room. So they're excited about that.
Thanks to the big family for that one as well, because they came in to see it for themselves, which is my understanding from last night when we were talking. And, uh, they realized that this place has a lot of promise, but it needs the next phase and then some. And so that $50,000 will come in handy for sure.
Absolutely. Yeah. And the library, if you look at their calendar, they have something for everyone, um, now that they're open and in full swing. Wednesday, October 22nd at 3:30, they're having an afternoon book discussion. They welcome new members. They're discussing When All Is Said by Anne Griffin. And copies are available for loan at the circulation desk. On Saturday, October 25th, starting at 11:30, they're having pause to read. Georgie, the therapy dog, will be returning to the library. He's going to be wearing a costume, so they encourage kids to wear costumes, read to Georgie. Um, there's going to be crafts and treats for kids, kindergarten to fourth grade. And registration is not required for that event. On Tuesday, October 28th at 6:30, Boston Spa resident Jerry Kraut is going to be signing copies of his memoir, Thank You Mom. She, I, that's, I think my daughter met him in the bookstore she worked at and she said he was such a nice man.
He's a very nice man. Went to the school with his son Steven and, uh, also he used to have a radio show before our Union College broadcast, uh, football background.
He's got a radio voice.
He's a good radio guy, yeah.
Uh, books will be available to purchase that night. Um, VACC Monday and Friday nights from 6:30 to 8:30 are team nights. And Saratoga, sixth through eighth, ninth, sixth through ninth graders can enjoy open gym, video games, board games, and more. And they're also looking for volunteers of all skills to help with seasonal jobs and daily operations. And they actually have an application online you can visit on their website, bostonspaareacc.org. Um, and the community Thanksgiving meal is going to be held at Union Firehouse. Um, volunteers are needed both Wednesday night, the day before Thanksgiving, and throughout the day on Thanksgiving Day. And you can contact Ray Otten if you would like to volunteer.
Last year, it was a little snowed out if I remember correctly, so let's hope it is better weather this go around.
And multiple fire calls.
Oh, yeah. That goes without saying though. That's the, that's just a part parcel of it all. Ben?
All right, the Committee on the Arts, they have a watercolor art class called Watercolor Fanatics at the Real McCoy, 28 Wash Street, 1:30 to 3:00. Um, where's the date? I didn't put the date. It's coming up. Um, check it out on their, uh, Facebook page. So I apologize, I didn't include the date there, but, um, it's, uh, something you can look up and is happening in the near future. All skill levels welcome and it is free.
October 11th.
Thank you.
Uh, which is past actually.
Wait, no, there's a, I think there's another one.
Yeah, maybe, because I see a second one. Hold on. Keep going. I'll get to it.
I probably could find it too. Um, then November 7th is Open Mic Night and Music Night, um, at the Real McCoy also, 28 Wash Street. It's free. It starts at 5:30 p.m. Um, the other thing people should know is the Saratoga Arts Grants are, are currently accepting, um, applications through November 21st. Their re-grant program, um, so they call artists, anyone who wants to do a project up to $5,000.
25th for Fanatics, by the way. 25th, it is Saturday, 1:30 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., just so you know.
October 25th?
Yes, it is.
Yes, thank you.
You got it.
Thank you very much. And the next Committee on Arts meeting is October 15th, tomorrow, 7:00 p.m. at Brookside. And then Caitlin sent in from the Park and Tree Board, she's the chair, uh, her update. I'll just read it quickly. The Park and Tree Board is enjoying all the beautiful village trees that are beginning to change colors this time of year. Last week, board members Caitlin Carwan and Christopher Williams spent time doing some tree maintenance on the trees planted in the last few months in Wilshow Park and on Milton Avenue. This included weeding around the trees, cutting some roots that were starting to girdle, loosening the soil around roots to help promote growth and mulching, plus some light pruning. All of these efforts will help increase the survival rate of newly planted trees. They pruned the younger oak trees in Low Street and they're planning another outing in Mulson Low Street and do some maintenance on the younger trees in Kelly Park. If you have, if you have young trees in your yard or right-of-way space and have any questions about getting them ready for winter, the Park and Tree Board would be happy to help. The board also wants to thank Frank Blair of the Boston Lions Club and his son Scott, a Rotary member, for helping with some small repairs at the Creekside Playground in Kelly Park. While there, they made a list of future repairs and are working to plan a workday later this fall, early next spring, to do some painting and some more extensive repairs. They're also planning a part of a cursed lumber to reseal, reseal some of the painting tables under the Kelly Park Pavilion. We appreciate their continued commitment to helping improve our village community spaces. The next Park and Tree meeting is October 21st, Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. in the Cornell Cooperative Conference Room. I noticed it's not on the calendar yet, so it'd be great if that could be put on the calendar, um, for that. And, um, the other thing that'd be great is for the Committee on the Arts, they do need another, uh, they, I should have announced this at the time. They're looking for another volunteer to, uh, fill their committee. So if anyone's interested, you don't have to be an artist. And it would be great if we could support them by, uh, posting that on our website and Facebook page. These volunteers do a lot to support the village. They work really hard and it'd be great for the village to support them and for them to feel supported. Um, so can we, can we get that posted? I've asked a couple of times on our Facebook and website.
I believe Ashley and Jen is waiting for something from the Committee on the Arts to assist.
I asked them for a blurb about what they were looking for and what they want to have about them.
Okay. I will also send them a reminder. Thank you for doing that.
And Sean, uh, besides paving, anything else going on exciting?
Uh, there is, there is.
See that?
Yeah, um, the DPW is also going to do a hydrant flush. There's like 400-plus hydrants to take care of. And regarding leaves and brush, I know that usually October 15th is the starting point for putting it out on the curb. And, uh, I would just urge folks that if your road got milled, um, don't put anything out until they pave it. Because then it's going to be in the way. So, um, but otherwise, if, if you've already been paved or aren't going to be paved, um, you know, as of the 15th, you can start putting out brush and leaves. So I know that leaves are falling in my yard pretty rapidly as we speak, so.
Well, then we'll kind of let you go catch them, I guess. Anything else on, uh, liaison and things? If not, let's go to Old Business Ethics Board first.
All right, put this on. Just, um, want to talk about, uh, the issue that we have an open space on the Ethics Board and wondering if you have someone in mind, Frank, or if not, um, can we post that there is opening on our website and Facebook page?
The same response.
Which is what?
I asked them for a blurb as to what they, like.
Oh, the Ethics Board? Yes, Ethics Board. Okay, so that's on the docket to do, to put a notice on the.
Well, honestly, not to pick anybody until the existing batch of ethics complaints are handled. And so I asked, I think I asked you last week to check in with, uh, one person that they're waiting on to finish that up. So once that's done, it's going to be the proper time to move forward with that, hopefully.
I guess I don't understand exactly this, that position because either you feel like you're in a situation where you can't participate, which case you just recuse yourself. But the board has five people and we could act, you know, if you're recusing yourself, you said you're not going to recuse yourself, in which case I'm not sure what the issue is with moving forward on, on, uh, appointing somebody in that case. I, I asked for that answer and I haven't received it.
Mary Verda, I won't speak for you, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, I'd like to hear from you, Frank.
I just told you, Frank, thoughts. And so, and I emailed my thoughts as well.
No, you haven't.
Oh, indeed I have, but.
So whether it's the timing or not, I, I don't know, but I don't see what we. When we get the information, as Jen's already requested it, to put it up there, at least to collect names, to start that process. I mean, when is our timing, do you think, on that?
I have no idea. So, I.
So we need to.
Look, as I say, I mean, no secret about it. I would like my, uh, name to be clear a little faster than this myself. And so I'm not thrilled that I'm still, you know, kind of hanging in the balance in this round for how many months now in these?
Long while.
Yeah, so, uh, I would hope that would be expedited at this point.
Not given that. Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'll go ahead. I don't think that, um, the fact that maybe there's already, you know, investigations before them that a new candidate couldn't get up to speed relatively quickly provided all the information. So, um, I'm sure it's already been, all the data's been collected that they're going to, to use to make their decision. So as long as that's made available, I don't see why, why we would say existing investigations is a roadblock to getting a candidate.
Or they could just abstain from this investigation, you know, they could still be appointed.
So one person is.
So it's been like three months and, you know, it's helpful to have a full board, the Ethics Board, so that they can have a quorum, so they can operate and, uh, have the input of five full members. So, um, again, I have not heard a reason to not, uh, name somebody or to name somebody and move forward with this. And again, if you, if you you, you should have someone in mind by now, or just recuse yourself and let the board, uh, post this and get applicants and figure it out. The ethics law does require, um, approval by four board members. That's something that, um, me, Liz, and Sean, um, agreed to. I think it was Verda's.
Not for any term vacancies, no?
Oh, no, not for interim, yeah. Um, but, um, it does say village board of trustees approval. Yeah, it doesn't specify four there, but for, for regular appointments. And some of these people, I think their terms are coming up. So, um, you know, we tried to make this as bipartisan and open as possible, the whole choosing of, uh, membership. And so it, it requires that, uh, four members will approve for regular appointees. It requires, um, that it's the responsibility of board trustees to solicit, to solicit new applicants to fill current and upcoming vacancies in the Board of Ethics in a timely manner. Solicitation includes at minimum placing the vacancy on the village board trustee's agenda for at least one meeting and on the Village of Boston Spa website and social media until the vacancy is filled. Um, the Board of Ethics shall conduct the initial review of applicants.
I think you're looking well beyond what you should be looking at. It's five is the only applicable thing for a vacancy that is other than a, in an expiration of term. The mayor shall appoint, the mayor shall appoint a new member of, for the unexpired term with, for a village board trustee's approval and, and sentence.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm talking about, um, there are appointments that are ending and, and people who are leaving and, uh, so.
They're not calling yet, so you can't.
No, but we can talk about following the law as it's written so that people know what the law is. Um, why, in your, in one of, in your email on October 6th, you said at this time it not be appropriate for the board to proceed in general, when I asked, are you accusing yourself or not? Why, why do you feel that it would not be appropriate for the board to proceed in general on, um, naming a replacement?
Because you're naming a new judge, uh, or jury member for a member of your own board, knowing that that member is the only person I believe currently with any active, uh, ethics situation for the Ethics Board.
So I think we're, we're missing this stuff. So, so the consultant that they had picked to work with them, they have, that person has to wrap up with, with the ethics.
The counsel.
The counsel, thank you, thank you. Um, do we? Did we get indication when that will happen?
I have reached out to her, I reached out to her again tonight, I haven't heard anything.
How did you find her? What was the connection?
I don't honestly remember. She's, she's an attorney who has done this in the past, and she's a labor attorney that I don't know how.
Because my understanding is she was engaged pretty actively.
Yes.
And then, okay, so maybe we get an answer about where that individual is and some assurances that things are moving forward. Right now, we only have one vacancy, when are the other, I don't have the list offhand.
I think it's coming up, I think they were appointed in 2021.
Okay, so in the meantime, let's figure out that one part. You know, next thing would be to figure out the vacancy and then we can get to that point. But Jen is still waiting on any blurb anyway, so...
And Frank, yeah, Frank, you indicated you had other issues with the ethics law, can you explain what those are?
I think there's anomalies throughout it that because we rushed it, that probably needed to get cleared up. I ran through it one day with Julie, about, what, about six, seven months ago, I want to say. And just looking at it in general as, hey, some of this doesn't make sense, I don't have any information of what the list was.
Can you share that with us? It wasn't rushed, it actually took forever because it took, there are multiple steps. I'm not surprised that any law we've written doesn't need improvement, but why not share that with all of us?
Parades, protests, special permits, was how we get it.
Well, are you gonna answer that question? Could you share what, what the issues are?
Okay, what I got for...
Since we've been very involved with the ethics law, it'd be interesting to see what they are, and we probably might have some insight and opinions about that.
Parades, protests, special permits.
Are you willing to share that?
Then I could say if I can find it at this point, it's much...
If you can find it? It sounds like you're, you're planning to revisit the ethics law, so it sounds like you have it somewhere.
I wasn't the one that brought any of this up, I don't know what you're even talking about at this point. I'm going, you asked the Ethics Board to be on the still business, you talked about it.
You mentioned, I think it was at the ice cream, socially you said there were issues with ethics law.
I said that there are a lot of different things that I remember that were problematic, I don't have a list of it.
My request...
Instead of spending time fighting about this, maybe we reach out to the Chair and ask?
No, I'm at, no, it's Frank's position, I'm requesting that you share with us what concerns you have, that's my request.
Parades, protests, special permits, did we not hit that already, I'm asking?
Yeah, I mean, we did hit that one issue, I guess I want to emphasize, and Carla, you can clarify anything that I say incorrectly. But people are allowed to go to the sidewalk or a corner with a sign and protest, and you do not need a permit to do that. If ICE, for instance, does something outrageous either here or in Portland or anywhere else, and you want to say something about that publicly, you don't have to wait for a permit to go out with your associates, you know, to make a statement about that. Certainly, if you're planning a larger event and it's a planned event, certainly we, the village, would appreciate a application for a permit, so that there's open communication with the village and there's planning. And everything is communicated well. But I just, there's been a lot of, there's a lot of uncertainty about what's permissible, both with special events and with parades and as they're called. So I think that's important that people understand that, they don't have to, just, it sounds like they don't even have to do a permit to assemble at Wiswol, so...
Well, I'm gonna actually, I need to...
Yeah, go ahead.
Correct myself on that, that in the new parks law that you all created a year or so ago, there actually is a permit requirement. But it was in the parks law as opposed to the parade and procession law, as opposed to the amusement law.
Good, I was asking, is there a law to back up the permit, so I'm glad there's something somewhere.
So yes, under the parks law, there is one paragraph, it's not very specific, but there is a paragraph requiring a permit, a special permit to be used. And I have that in the email, ready to send to all of you, it's section 150-4.
Can you read it quickly, or is it very long?
No, it's about, just smudge in.
All right, okay.
Two inches?
Okay, so that's for parks.
Pretty, pretty small font.
And people should understand, there's, there's a difference between like a sidewalk right-of-way and actual village property that is a park and what, and how those two things are different.
Well, it's how they're defined, a park is defined under the parks law, it doesn't talk about sidewalks, that's in the sidewalk law.
Right, yes, and the parade law, this talks about. There's a reason there's two different permits, right?
There's a permit for parades and processions that this Board wanted to do.
Right.
There is a permit for using one of the named parks.
Right, and they're two different things.
I guess they're two different things, one is a, they're in the law. No, I'm not trying to be facetious, but what I'm saying is, the law in parks merely says, a written permit shall be issued by the village clerk, does not come to this Board. Shall be issued by the village clerk, if it meets certain things. The parade law shall be issued, so, and that's what a parade is, they're just different.
By the clerk, yes. And Frank explained this pretty well at the previous meeting, that for the parade events and like being on the street, you don't need insurance. But in the parks, you do need insurance, because it's our property and we want to be covered.
And that is likely, that's not in the law, but as the mayor indicated, that's a policy from the insurance company, saying that you need to have that. The law doesn't say you have that insurance, but the insurance company does.
Right, but we do currently, we say for special events and parks, right, 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 it's our policy.
And we make sure that policies apply uniformly to everybody regardless of any speech occurring in anything of this sort.
But people may want to know, why no insurance for a parade permit where you do need one for a special event in a park? And you explained that the park is on our property and so we want to be insured, and the parade is a different animal.
I do want to be careful, though, that we're saying, so we have the holiday parade, we ask for insurance for them, so I think...
I think a major undertaking that shuts down roads to that degree and that has a potential for participation that could get people hurt. I think we have to in that type of situation where it's something beyond just a walking up a sidewalk with a sign scenario. That makes sense as to why we enhance to a insurance requirement for a holiday parade or whatever.
Yeah, it may make sense to amend the parade law then, to specify if the street is being closed down, then we require insurance, which it doesn't now. Doesn't, there's no requirement for insurance.
Jennifer? Both the parade and the more, to the holiday parade and the more of the parade, we ask for a permit for DOT. We provide our corporate insurance to DOT when we get that permit to have our parade.
So it's our insurance?
It's our insurance first and then we get it covered by the SPPA.
The sponsoring.
Right.
And is that because DOT requires it?
Yes.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with us? DOT requires insurance?
As part of their permit process.
Right, but there's not, there's...
And I have to fill out.
Okay, that's good to know, there's no, nothing in our law that says people need insurance to have a parade.
I think we've said it three times, but let's say it four, just in case. There is nothing in the law requiring insurance in the usage of parks specifically. That is a policy that's mandated by our insurance carrier because some activity is going on on specifically our property. And therefore, if damage were done to the property or to a person on the property, then we would be held liable. That's why we get the protection as they require to protect the village in that situation. But if it's something on a sidewalk, in terms of just the general, hell no, we won't go, or whatever, then it's more or less assumed to be just a normal activity of walking and, on a sidewalk, per se. And remember, the sidewalk's a responsibility of the property owner anyway in that situation. So if something faulty happened on that sidewalk, the recourse would be to sue the individual who's the property owner, who's hopefully insured in that situation.
So there's no insurance required by law or policy for the sidewalk.
And they all looked happily wrapped, zoning is next.
All right, zoning. So the most pressing issue is the scheduling of a special meeting that we've all said is needed and desired. And we were all set to do it today, and it didn't happen. And the time that everyone said they were available except one person is October 20th. I asked you, Frank, and there's no other times that have been specified.
Christopher, my understanding may not be available on the 20th at this point, right?
Well, he was, but we'd have to obviously confirm that.
Well, I did today, actually, in anticipation of this, I reached out to Chris this morning about the 20th, that I indicated that we maybe go there. And he said he has a meeting tentatively scheduled for that time, but he will confirm if that's happening, what time, and so he may be able to do both. And I said, hold off until I find out what's happening tonight.
So I would suggest we schedule for October 20th. And what do people think of that?
Minimum available, is there, when is your availability open back up?
I was pretty much out of pocket for that day, but I'll see what I can do, it was coming down, so...
Okay, let's try, because I really don't know how we're gonna fit it in.
Mary, how are you on that?
I'm good.
Sean?
All right, October 20th, we'll double check with Chris.
What time?
6:30?
That's fine.
I just don't think it's doubtful. Don't know.
You could do it in the, I think it'd be, oh, Sean? Okay, I don't think I have any large mass for that.
Yes, Andrea, what did you say that way?
I was saying just do it as a field job, off-meeting-meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that, that's great, wonderful. The other piece is, as you know, I've been trying to encourage and facilitate Board discussion between meetings. Our last special zoning meeting was July 21st, so we got just started on a conversation at that meeting. And without doing work between meetings, very little will get done. And so towards that effort of facilitating conversation between meetings, I shared an Excel and asked everybody for, with issues that I thought were some of the, not every issue, but rising to the top for me, and asking others to add to it. And I'm glad Bernadette, you finally completed it last night, so thank you for doing that. So everyone has put in their two cents, except you, Frank, and I think it would be helpful. But even at this point, we have some emerging consensus, so, based on comments. So for example, how to zone the nursing home and county building properties, people, the majority are comfortable zoning that R2, for instance. So let's, let's go ahead and put that in the draft code for the next draft. The majority are comfortable making height standards for non-residential dwelling and residential zone equal to residential dwelling, standard of 36 feet, because right now it's taller for some reason. So that's a majority issue, let's put that, let's just go ahead and do it, sidewalks.
Wait a minute, you just, okay, two things, then your reactions, the appropriate one, which is, I'm not sure that is accurate, because it hasn't even discussed that. The current building that's located at the infirmary is probably greater than 36 feet tall, if I had to guess? Anybody want to venture a guess on that one? I would say 40 plus, right? And so how do you ameliorate that situation in the first place? And that's residential zone, R2, you're saying, so I'm not sure how you just say, you know, snap your fingers and say that's gonna work.
That's what, first, if we commit to that standard, then we figure out how to make it work. Obviously, it's, there's non-conforming language as well in there from previous structures.
Yeah, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure.
Right, but that building may need to come down, but at the same time, are you gonna encourage a new build that would be a better-looking building at that point? Or a more modern building that would be able to establish the same height standards in that situation or not?
Well, we're talking about R2, is that the limit, 36?
He's trying to make it...
We're talking about the accessory, the non-residential accessory building.
Yes, yeah, like a garage, I think, is what I mean, so maybe we specify, sorry, go ahead.
Well, the point was that why should the accessory building be allowed to be taller than the main building, the residential building? Especially if we're allowing non-residential uses, God knows what will be built. And so almost nobody understands why you'd put an accessory building higher than the main building. And so the majority agrees, so there's, there's issues where we seem to be reaching consensus, or at least the majority, that for the purposes of creating the next draft and improving what's there now, which is not a final draft and shouldn't be, we should be able to do these things between meetings and make adjustments, as we have in the past. Sidewalks must provide ADA compliant signs along adjacent streets as part of the plan, so not just install new ones, but, but make sure, a site plan. So if someone's putting in a site plan, they have to repair their sidewalks if there's already sidewalks in that neighborhood on that street. So that's a majority opinion. Have alternate PB and ZBA members appointed for two years, not one year, that's a majority opinion. Make sure open space zones align with the first meeting discussion.
Sorry, what was that last one?
Make sure the open space...
No, no. Hey, bless you.
What cell are you in first, what row, sorry?
What, the PB and ZBA members appointed for two years, not one-year terms?
Give me a cell number, 10, 11?
I'm just, I copied and pasted into another note.
Not everybody agrees with you on that, is my point.
No, it's a, but we have three Board members who said that, that sounds like it makes sense.
It's actually one of the most asinine ideas you can come up with, because realistically, you don't want to be stuck with a situation that's not working. That's why it's a probationary one-year period for a...
Probation, it's not probationary, it ends.
That's the idea, they can be renewed in that position or not, but to have them around two years, if it's not working out for some reason, it's tougher to get rid of them.
Two years is how you get someone who actually knows what they're doing, versus a beginner constantly coming and going, but anyway.
May, may, I'm sorry, may, didn't I give you advice on that, saying either you couldn't do that, or the reason you can't do that, in my column?
Number of alternates and terms are up to Village Board, no state law, most are two years, is that what you wrote? Is that what you're thinking?
I know I addressed it.
Well, I think there's, I think that needs to be discussed, because quite honestly, I think alternates should be going anyway to meetings, that's how you learn, I don't...
You did, you said, you said, oh, sorry, go ahead.
We have had situations where people realize they couldn't actually commit, and rather, it takes time for people to say that they can't actually commit to something. So really, I think it's good to have like alternates as a yearly basis, look at it, how's it going, blah, blah, blah. I don't know that I think it's a good idea to put someone for two years.
All right, this is what Carla wrote, number of alternates and terms are up to the Village Board, parentheses, no state law, most are two years.
It's okay, Carla can have that opinion, I'm sharing my opinion, I love Carla and I respect your opinion, but I just think in practice, you know...
So it, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I think, I think it's a easy thing, if the concern is people being up to speed to understanding what the process is, they should go to meetings. Like right now, people, some people do not opt to go to meetings. So when I was on ZBA, I made sure I was at every meeting, even if I wasn't being called upon. So I think before we even get there, I want to see people at meetings, just play it right.
You can put that in law now, the problem was, the Planning Board Chair wasn't informing the alternates of when they had a meeting, so that was a problem, there's some communication issues there.
No, I think the two ways, certainly communications from the, from either the clerk or the chairs happens, you know? But also, also, somebody, generally, I would check in with, yeah, did we have a meeting? Sometimes there wouldn't be, but I always checked. And I don't think that's a hard thing for somebody to do if they want to be an alternative. So I don't, I don't know that I agree for two years, if that's your concern, to get them up to speed, the best way to get them up to speed is to go, and not always going.
And the fact is, we may not, all five of us, agree on a number of issues, but at some point, we need to resolve, and it should be resolved by whatever the majority is comfortable with. And that's where I'm trying to see if we can get to that space, not necessarily 100% humanity.
I thought you were reading, all four of us agree.
That would be ideal, though. So again, Frank has not provided any comments, and as he.
I think I just did.
Well, you didn't provide any to the Excel, even though it was shared with you since September 4.
They're having a hard time accessing. I'm trying to get Carla.
Oh, come on. Then you need to tell me.
No, she's just right, right this minute.
Oh, now? Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't yell at me.
I'm not yelling. I'm yelling at this idea that Frank had a hard time accessing, which is what I thought you were.
Carla's having a hard time.
Now. All right, sorry.
Like, you need to apologize, really.
I apologize, I just did. I thought you were talking about Frank's.
You're always jumping.
I thought you were talking about a reason that Frank has not supplied any comments to this Excel, unlike all seven of the rest of us, and you did not supply any comments to the first special, the special zoning meeting. You know, which was July 21st.
Folks.
We were all planning, we were all planning to, and did provide comments, except for you, Frank. And my impression is, at this point, unless you have a reason for not supplying comments on this Excel, that is the only mechanism we have, and the only time any of us are talking about these things between the meeting. You guys should know, there's been no progress on zoning since August 20th, when the last draft came out, other than this Excel, which is the only attempt by this board to move things forward, and Frank has been absent. Completely absent from this whole process.
To be clear to the public, there has been activity with our council and with Chris Mitchell in doing work. So to say that there's been no activity.
Not since August 20th, not since the draft has been issued. There hasn't. I mean, there's been, there have been some emails back and forth, but in terms of change. In fact, this next issue about open space.
There is a zoning meeting on the, actually, if you're going to open space, we actually resolved something by email with Anna's assistance, because you were wrong on something about the veterans park.
I asked a question, I wasn't wrong.
And it should have been protected open space, when not understanding what those properties were.
Yes, so here's the thing, Frank.
It's okay, Ben.
We have said open space should align with first meeting discussion, include all village open recreational properties, including Tedesco Trail, Wizwell Park, Old Iron Spring, Kelly Park, Village Pool, Colonial Hills Park, Victory slash Victory Circle. There's a majority that thinks that's fine, and has no problem. And when we, when I suggested that we go.
Okay, folks.
When I suggested.
Guys, please, please, like, I know we're a mess up here, but stop, both of you. Please stop. We are trying, we're already struggling to keep together right now. I'm asking everybody just to, please help us out and just.
All right, and I apologize. I apologize. I'm getting agitated too, so it doesn't help.
We have a zoning meeting on Monday. I think this is gonna be best handled at that point. Something you want to say that you want to instantly handle in the next seven days, Ben, or six days? You send 18 emails a day about zoning, it feels like, and how we.
And you send zero. So the.
No, actually, I do respond, because I responded to your open space issue.
Until today, until today, until today, you proposed, till today, you proposed no day for a special meeting since July 21st.
No, actually, the 14th was proposed, and you tried to spin it to the 20th. I don't know.
You did respond to the 14th.
You never said the.
Yes, you did. You filled out the doodle. I did a doodle for a reason.
Yeah, and we all expressed an interest, and I said, oh, it would be hard to have a zoning meet at the same time as a board meeting. But you didn't indicate anything, but you, then you put it on me that, oh, Ben said the 20th, therefore, we're not doing it the 14th.
I selected the 14th. It was the only.
No, you never, there's no email for me selecting.
I'm gonna spend another 10 or 15 minutes arguing about it. We have a meeting Monday. Let's move forward.
The point I want to make here with the final position, this open space zone should be non-controversial at this point. The majority agrees with it, and when I said, Chris, can you please put this in the zoning and have the map reflect the open space for Wizwell, Tedesco, Iron Spring, Kelly Park, Village Pool, Colonial Hills, because they're all single lots and they're all owned by the village, he said, yes, I can do it. And you said, Frank, no, don't do anything until we meet. So you are actively impeding the ability of this draft to move forward, and I don't understand.
We are not supposed to be making decisions over email in the first place, I hope.
We are, we always edit drafts between meetings, Frank. We have done that with laws even.
Propose things, the vote is officially in public.
Yeah, of course.
So.
So we have made changes, and we will continue to make changes between meetings.
New business, anybody? No, there's actually nothing, sorry. Pull a comment on any issue, three minutes, and if you're on to, now would be the time to raise your hand. Yeah, go ahead. Come on up to that. Bye, thank you.
Yes, Tango, 32 Cat Street. First of all, Ben, I hope that if you plan to. What's it called?
Slade.
No, like a Portland, you keep your clothes on, please.
I would.
I'm gonna bring this up again, Kelly Park. We've got bums laying down there, drunk, all day long. I've explained, I've talked to you guys about it over and over and over and over again. Nothing is being done. The guy that cleans it was down there the other day, and there was a man coming out of the girls' bathroom. When he was questioned why, he said, because it's closer than the men's bathroom. Here is a nice little picture of what goes on at Kelly Park. How would you like to see that, if you were a kid going into Kelly Park? Nice, huh?
How often do we clean the bathrooms?
Every night.
We do.
After the drunks are down there all day long, from 7 o'clock till sunset.
But somebody cleans the bathrooms every night?
Yes. Yes, they do.
All right, that's, that's.
You guys talking about insurance and permits, what happens if one of those guys called down and cracked his head open? Who's gonna be liable then? The village of Boston Spots gonna be liable. All of these issues have been brought to the village, and not one thing has been done. I'm sick of it.
The police have been actually trying to actively address something the other day, on Saturday, I want to say it was, or Sunday, actually, when I got back. Talking to somebody that was in the parking pavilion during the rainy, unfortunately, day, if I remember correctly. Maybe it was Monday. So we've been trying to take an active situation. It's a little prickly. I don't want to go into specific details about one person out of privacy reasons.
It's not just him.
No, I know, but he's, he's one of the bigger problems in that situation. So we're trying to, I think, manage that and work with it, because he's a lifelong resident technically of this village.
So we're ignoring it?
It's not, it's not, no, it's not ignoring, but there's only so many things you can do also in this situation.
Why? Because our code says.
It's a public park, and he does give way.
Lloydering, to stay behind, to Terry or to stay unnecessarily upon the streets, roads, highway, public parks or other public area, including the congregating, blah, blah, blah. He is loitering. He has been there every day for months and months, from sunup to sundown, drunk off his ass.
And he does get out when there's a permit active, so he's actually been responsible enough to honor those aspects.
Does he have a permit to congregate there?
No, but he's a member of the public technically, and that's where it gets prickly in this situation.
I don't agree. I think you guys are just passing the buck and passing the buck and passing the buck. And I really appreciate that, Ben, you brought up that Frank was down there in the Rotary, because they did call me. It's embarrassing. That park is embarrassing. And we are doing absolutely nothing. Do not say, I can, I drive right there. I'm right there. I can drive there 50 times a day. No, I've never seen, excuse me, Mike, I've never seen a goddamn cop in there, ever, saying anything to him. If they were sitting down there in Wizwell Park drunk all day, would that be allowed?
And he's come into the village with complaints on how he's treated in that park too, right, to be honest with you.
He doesn't even need there. He's a vagrant.
Vagrant or not, Anna, he is in a public park, and there are limits to what the village can do.
Okay, so if it were in Wizwell Park, the park we spent, what, a million bucks on, would we allow it? Yes or no?
We've had situations where we've had to turn our eye on certain things, as long as it's in the policies. It's unfortunately universal, yeah. We have had to be there.
You know what? Pass the buck again, board. When some little girl tries to go in the bathroom down there, and there's some gross old man in that bathroom, and something happens to her, it's gonna be on your shoulders, all five of you.
So, so I did not know there was communication regarding this. I know you've been here before talking about it, but.
The village, Carmen's been into the village several times, explaining the same situation.
I wonder, so, so one thing, I would like to know what are possible actions that we can take. One thing, though, I think we could take, and we should probably look into, is one of those emergency call sort of light beacon things.
What I think you're looking into, yeah.
Just anything to start. So I think it's, and actually, I forget who I was talking to about this, unrelated.
Can we give Mr. DiMartino to give a little bit of analysis as to what's been going on over there since he is here?
Yeah, you put him on the spot.
That's all I got. Shame on you all for allowing this to go on, year after year after year.
Mike, go ahead, please. Come on up if you want.
I mean, I would say the fact that no patrol car has been in the park is not an accurate assessment or a.
I said, I've never seen you down there. That's all my bad.
No, that's fine. There are various times for hours a day where the patrols are there. And I have been made aware of the one particular person who then relocates himself. And then on another day, he may come back. And loitering would be in an area where you would have to be a little bit more conclusive as to, you know, what the definition of actually loitering is a bit.
So, Mike, long story short, what are your thoughts on where to go with it?
Well, I can say for a fact that I yelled with a homeless person just last week. I made a call to DSS, they had no help there. I made a call to the shelter in Saratoga. They do not take drop-ins. That's what they term them, that was a drop-in. So if we were to pick up a homeless person, we try to find shelter for him or her, they will not accept that person. I know, no, there has to be a little bit more protocol while we are. They will go to the shelters of Saratoga. So MHU was an option that I exercised on this specific person, but that is unfortunately only temporary.
What does that issue mean?
The mental health unit, it's a ground hospital. If a person informs us they have mental instability, or the borderline, because that's now the word now that is more of a, not a trigger word, but a word that has an option for them. So if they say I'm borderline, then we have to take them on a night four one, mental health form, and we take them up there. They do come back. And that's where it becomes a problem for us, and it is a problem. So we have to understand or figure out how we go about getting to a better resolution to help them. Because if they really are homeless, which 99% of them are, what do we do? So that puts us in a position where what we can do and what we can't do. There are some that go to DSS, they get qualified under application, but then they have suspended terms. So where DSS will not allow them to come back, three, five, seven, 10 days, which would be calendar days. So where do they lay their head in between of those places? And unfortunately, the park is an option. Excuse me, Tedesco Trail, we've had two or three being moved out of there. The Washington Avenue Extension, we have a little lean to there. We had to break that down, move him on.
You had one at 1567, didn't you?
What's that?
Yeah, you had one at 1567, I believe.
What's anything scarier about that?
It's better than that.
Sorry, sorry.
You know, we had one that was behind the post office, by Iron Spring, and Kelly Park. So they just said, you move the one out of there, so why can't the one out of Kelly, the ones out of Kelly Park be moved? That would be my question. Why, he walks by my house every day at 7 o'clock with a bag full of stuff in his soaps, and he doesn't drink until Carmen comes and picks it up. So we're. We know what we're talking about, but he's got buttons down. Yeah, that's this other, the other gentleman, or then the girl's one, they come and kick it out. They flock. You gotta understand, you're gonna allow one there all day long, then they just start flocking there.
I will say, in the capital region, the homelessness issue has gotten significantly worse. Albany, honestly, since COVID, I mean, there's, there's a lot more. And our communities like this are starting to see that too, because everywhere is kind of really struggling with this. I would, I don't know, maybe I could reach out to shelters to see what the process is to get. I know, Anna, but we don't have much, we don't, by law, I don't think we have a lot of recourse. That's the problem.
A hundred dollars a day, and so what do we put them at, the debtor's prison at that point? There's no such thing at that point.
I'm, I'm just trying to think of things that we, we do have in our control. And I would like to, I don't know what they're actually called, but those beacons, I think it would be wise to have.
Blue lights.
Blue lights, one of those, that instantly, you know, reaches out to your, you know, contacts our law enforcement. Probably should have that in Iron Spring too, honestly, you know, where it's less visible, maybe on the trail. I don't know how you do that one, but, but, so.
Let's, let's close this out, throw it, Mike.
There was a gentleman that came to the station the same time I was dealing with another female, at the same exact time, and knocked on the door, but ringed the bell. And said, quote unquote, "I'm homeless, you need to find me a place to live." We, we don't have the resource or the ability to actually find a living quarters for that person. We can do a temporary, but when the temporary expires, then it revolves back to where they started again, so that would be, i.e. Kelly Park, Tedesco. So we have to figure out how and where we can get them for a substantial amount of time. The unfortunate thing is a lot of, all of them are employed. I don't know if they're seeking employment. If they're interested in employment, which would take up a lot of their downtime for the course of the day, but in the end, they really don't have a place to live. So what would be the solution to help them find a place to live? And unfortunately for those folks, it's just all temporary.
Yeah, but New York State, I wish there were, you know, I know people have talked about maybe extending that sort of temporary status, or whatever you want to call it, because that's an instance, for instance.
We have a responsibility to that. And we, we are obligated to certainly have to ask you to move on, only based on the fact that there are ordinances and there are laws. But when they move to another spot, does that now recalculate a new timing period? Like, okay, I moved from A to B, this would be her back to, okay, so this is my starting point now at B. So does a day or two go by? And then maybe, then to move to the next spot. So does, it just becomes kind of like you kind of move around the board, where you alleviate yourself in one spot to get to the next spot, and then it kind of just cycles around again. From my experience, I can't say that's for everybody, but.
One of the solutions we've employed is to do things to make the parks busier in terms of getting the pickleball, basketball there. With Wizwell Park, obviously, making it a much more desirable park to do X, Y, Z in at this point. And I think it's having a generally positive effect, because we haven't had as many needs to go to the camera to videotape at Kelly Park that I remember from my first year as mayor here, as we got that installed in the first place. So a little bit less in terms of miscreant goings on, per se. But, you know, you're not gonna eliminate everything either. It's just not gonna be possible to do that, no matter how many activities we put into a park. And so, you know, if you want to come up with an idea, Anna's with us, and, you know, let us know what the county says on that too. We're happy to get any input, because we're kind of hands tied. We have a hundred dollar a day type fine or something like that, it was in the code. That's not gonna go a hundred dollar in this whole thing. It's just not.
I don't think that if he was told to leave several days in a row, he would keep coming back.
Oh, no, he has. He has. He has.
Well, then arrest him.
For what? I mean.
Vacancy. I don't know. If it reflects you guys' houses are in a park, this is what you don't understand. This is a park where little children are playing every day. They're in the restrooms. What if a mother said, yeah, you can go over to the ladies' room, and goes in there, and one of these guys is in there? Do you have any idea what can happen? Wake up, for Christ's sake, wake up! No, no, it's not, I don't care about Albany.
No, what I'm saying is we are, hands are tied.
Some of them, that's the other.
Okay, let's.
They do get tokens from DSS, TTA tokens, where they qualify for that. But a token takes them to Saratoga Springs, and it takes them back to Boston Spa. And then they go to Springs, and then back to Boston Spa.
At the end of the day, homelessness is not a crime. Having an addiction is not a crime.
Lawyer, yes.
It's not, it's not.
It's a public place.
Civil.
Civil penalty.
Yeah.
Okay. So, let me, let me say that we're going to, well, folks, folks, we're gonna agree to disagree on that point right now. We will continue public comment. Go ahead, Liz. Sorry about that.
Hey, something different. What's up, everybody? Liz, the 113 chair ground. I just want to echo what Anna was talking about earlier with the car show. We have an excellent feature here. So, we had our 23rd annual, we just, B S P T A, I'm speaking on one of them. Just wanted to thank everybody, the village board, the village staff, can fill my list here, the D P W, the police officers, all of our volunteers and gunders, all of our car show attendees. We had about 400-ish cars there. Also want to thank all the businesses and community that came. And thanks, everyone. And see you next year. If you want to volunteer, check us out on boston.org. Thanks.
Thank you. Liz, uh, be honest.
Liz Cormos, 89 high. The homeless thing is a little tough one. And it's getting worse because of the housing costs. People can't afford apartments anymore. And there's the addiction and everything else. I don't know what the solution is for me. It's awful. Just on the ethics board, if the mayor recuses himself because...
He hasn't?
Well, if, I believe he should, because he's, the deputy mayor could make the appointment. And we'll see why not. And the board could vote on it. I think that would be a good solution. And then you could get a full board, and the new person could get caught up and get it done. By the way, the complaint, or the complaints, plural, were made in April. That's six months ago. This should be resolved by now. It's, no complaint should take six months. If the person that is supposed to help on that isn't doing it after six months, get somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Little lovely ladies back there. You can see it back there. Very quiet, very tenet. They're, they're the best in the house, I can tell you. Everybody?
Quite frankly.
Okay, Chris, you're, you're good too, okay? Uh, anybody on Zoom? I see nobody on Zoom last fall, last fall, and nobody there. Let's go to other businesses, including but not limited to board response to public comment. We obviously responded to Anna's issues, because I think it was a tough issue that we need to address because I think people come to us frequently with that one. And as I think everybody realizes, there is no easy answer on that one for sure. Uh, go ahead, Sean, do you have anything else?
No, I mean, it's, and, and we, it's probably gonna get worse. Because a lot of social programs have been defunded. So, there just isn't funds to help those. So, I wouldn't, I would see this problem not miraculously getting better. And I just, you know, it's not something... It's a public place. And yeah, you're not supposed to be there certain hours. But if a person wants to go down there every day and sit, you know, whether, you know, obviously drinking is illegal in, in a public park. But if you take that out of the equation, we wouldn't stop anyone else who is enjoying the park, sitting there every day all day, as long as they follow the rules and left when they were supposed to leave. It seems that's maybe one of the big issues, is this person isn't leaving, you know, is following the rules.
It's just like speech, a consistent treatment policy, basically. It, it's unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you want to look at it, it's just a reality of you've got to treat everybody consistently in these realms. And it makes some people angry that we have to go that line, but that's, we're trying to protect the village too, because somebody could go to the A C L U and say, sue them very easily. Sorry, not to cut you off, but I just wanted to...
No, 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 I'm pretty much right though.
It's a tough issue. No, no good answers. Uh, I, I just want to mention, going back to zoning for a second. The neighborhood I'm a part of, a number of neighborhood residents recently had a meeting and talked about some of the major zoning issues that pertain specifically to their neighborhood. And they were generally open to non-residential uses in neighborhood. But they were unanimous that if there's going to be non-residential uses in residential zones, that there needs to be specific design and site development standards and, including building design, parking, delivery, lighting hours of operation, things like that. All of these that are specific to the residential areas, so as not to impinge on other, on the people who live there. So, that was really important to people, and I hope this zoning board takes it to heart. I do want to apologize for getting agitated raising my voice. I, I'm just very frustrated by what I think is very blatant, obvious stonewalling by Mayor Rossi. And, and so it's hard not to feel that way. But I'll try to not be agitated in the future, given the obstacles.
Mary will now apologize for raising her voice all meeting long, every meeting we have, because she does it. Every meeting, Mary, gotta stop, I tell you.
Try to make even. Sean brings up a good point with the gentleman in the park and several of them have a drinking problem. If they're told they can't be drinking there, that might cause them to, you know, move out of the park or stop drinking. I know, I know you can't just stop drinking. They need help. But if you try to enforce that aspect of the law, maybe it'll help them move on.
First, we have to actually find legitimate alcohol on them too, because that's not exactly easy in search. You know, policies don't necessarily allow us to just jump into a paper bag to see what's in it. So, that's always the second challenge in that one, but I give or you go with that.
They gotta go somewhere.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the general, it's a problem that obviously, I appreciate that all of us recognize that. And I think probably with housing's expensive, but also the services, like New York State, like there's a lot of protections for unhoused individuals. And you can't force them into a situation or housing situation if they don't want to be there. Sometimes, I know our public, our county public defender, and I had a conversation back when Oscar was the defender, health defender, there, think about Congress Park. We were talking, and I noticed some of those folks were veterans. He goes, "I regularly reach out to them to try to get them into our veterans, homeless veterans programs. They don't want to go." And how, how do we overcome that? We're not skilled, the law's not on our side in this way, you know, as far as like forcing people. Our police officers are, are kind of limited in what they can do. We only have one shelter for like all of this area, Saratoga County, Warren. Like, we are underserved in that area. So, I get why they're not just having intake. But I'm curious what the process is to get somebody in there. But again, they have to want to go. And that is hard for some people, where for some folks, instability feels like stability and something different is, is hard, you know. It's hard for them to kind of make that adjustment. I think maybe we can think about as a board, like different safety measures. Like, I would love to see the blue light thing. I know it doesn't necessarily satisfy some of Anna's immediate concerns, but I think we should have them there. Like, an immediate way to contact law enforcement or get the attention of our law enforcement. I, I just don't really see this changing significantly until New York State and other programs, you know, other sort of things are really given a hard look at. And how do we address this? Because every municipality, I, I want, I don't want to say every municipality, but I'm gonna venture to guess, it's almost every municipality is really struggling with this. And we are finding out we don't have the, the infrastructure to serve these people. And so, that's not the answer, you know, Anna wants. But within our realm, maybe we can figure out some stuff. I don't know what that is yet. But I know there's new stuff we probably have to consider, but...
Well, I think you're right. I think some sort of signal, it could be hooked, hooked up with a cell drop so that it directly rings the police office, so they get a, you know, a quick response time to these things and consistently quick response might be a deterrent. That would probably be the first step.
It's one of the things that we actually, or I was insisting on in the new Kelly Park plan, you know, obviously on the sports fields or sports courts. But I've been saying for a while that when you go deeper into the, you know, lawn area there, that you get down to the end of the trail and something goes wrong, you have no hope to get help out there. You know, especially that's low on the cell service side because of how low that ground is. And so, until we get that new monopole up to, you know, something like that might be the only real solution, getting somebody out there, save your whatever. And we've had emergency calls during major rainstorms or whatnot, because that is very, very, very wet land back there when it rains. So, that is something, something that I've insisted on in every plan that we do going forward for Kelly Park. We get those in that plan set. If we're gonna do it sooner, it's fine, but on the horizon, no matter what, you know, that one. Just for me, you know, I just wanted to maybe take a step back and look at the topic like that to say, you know, for all the infighting and elaciousness we can go through, you know, five-hour meetings and everything else, I think we just took a, you know, half an hour to all say, we acknowledge an issue. We find that issue to be a tough one to deal with. We want to be humanitarians about it. We also want to make sure we have safety in it. And it's not a Republican or Democrat issue, or shouldn't be at the end of the day. When I was having breakfast on Saturday with Pat Fleming from Another Day, Another Diner at the White House, hopefully coming out in the next week or two, we were talking about, he's interested maybe going to politics someday from Troy. And I said to him, you know, my friends that know me best would think I'm a Democrat half the time with the policies on a national level that we, you know, tend to embrace. And I think that's what the epitome of local politics is, is that Republican and Democrat, when it comes to that national mentality, it doesn't even, it doesn't play correctly with it. So, you know, what you see happening on the national stage, what you see happening in the local stage are two entirely different things. And a topic like this, I think exemplifies that, where we all agree. We'd love to do something, we'll try to do something, but we can't just be a hard ass about it, to put it bluntly. And because there's just no way to legally be the hard ass about it in a situation like this. And we have to protect our residents, not just from the safety aspect, but also from the lawsuit aspect of it and what it could cost them at the end of the day if we do something wrong. So, it's a balancing act, as are many of the things we deal with day to day in local politics. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can come up with more solutions. But if anybody has an idea out there, you know where to find us. So, please let us know. Uh, let's go to, you want to go to the executive session to discuss what you wanted to discuss earlier or not? That's up to you.
Is it something that will involve all of us?
You know, I would actually feel comfortable if you did, because I, I've kind of stated a policy from my latitude on something, and I would like the board's backing on it, just so that everybody's on the same page on it. So, can I get a motion to go into executive session related to an active police investigation matter?
I like the motion.
And that's related to V A C C?
I just stated an active police investigation. That's all I can state for that. Is that a second?
Guess I'll second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're gonna go to the executive session.
Will there be an action afterwards?
There will likely be no action taken after it. However, we'll come back into officially closed meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's do, hold on.
Oh, yeah.
Now, we're back.
Okay, we're back in session at this time, and no actions could be directly taken from the executive session. However, during that executive session, we found out that Chris is not available next Monday, so there will not be a zoning meeting on the 20th as was originally proposed. We're now just discussing amongst ourselves, as we were waiting for the recording restart for everybody, whether or not we would just do the original concept of doing a dual meeting on the 27th instead of what we were gonna maybe do tonight, starting the meeting at 6:30 and going to zoning basically around 7 o'clock to try to finish that up on the 27th of October. That's where we stand. Go ahead, folks. Sorry.
I mean, I'm open to that, just because it's good to have a meeting. What if we did a doodle poll for the entire week of the 20th, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 27, and 28? Why not? And because who knows if Chris even is available 27?
Probably is definitely a no. I'll tell you that right now.
All right. So, 20, 21, 22, 23, 27, 28, 29, 30, I don't know, in there. And, and then along with, when are you available? Maybe like, what is your preference? Like, what is your top choice? And maybe 27th will come out on top.
No, I think it's, if we're all available, the most amount of people available.
You know, there was a big confusion last time where we thought it was a 14th, but then we thought it wasn't, and we didn't know.
I would like to make a motion that for the time being, that we will have our regular board meeting on October 27th, begin at 6:30 PM. And a second, a special meeting will begin immediately thereafter with a goal time of 7 PM related to zoning on October 27th.
That's it. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Raymond with the first and trustee Fandesa with the second on that discussion.
Yeah. Can we have some backup plan? Because we seem to need that.
I think we come up with backup plan after we know that this doesn't work.
What, after the 27th?
We'll know tomorrow, probably, if you will.
Right. So, you're gonna verify.
I sent him a text.
Okay. So, if he can't make it, then we're gonna probably try to do something prior to that one.
All right. If he cannot make the 27th, we do, do a poll for the week of the 20th and the week of the 27th. And when we indicate, if we need to indicate when you're available and when your preference is.
It would, it would be 6:30. It would always be 6:30.
6:30 for the normal meeting, 7 o'clock.
No, 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 no. If we have to do, just do it.
I'm fine with that.
Would it be 6:30?
Yeah. Okay.
I don't think it does progress.
For now, as an official motion and second, for the 27th as a regular 6:30 meeting and goal 7 PM start time for a special meeting for zoning workshop.
And that might require that we, I guess, vote on decreasing the agenda in terms of some of the items?
There's no way to vote that in. It's just gonna be on our system and...
Let's try to have more on the consent, like as much as possible.
That, or if we find ourselves needing to get more work done, we'll figure out a way to do a Tuesday morning or something like that, just to get anything else done.
I mean, we could like bypass.
Something, something, something. We have to, we have to work.
We could bypass some of the announcements in the...
Yeah, or season reports or...
We'll figure out a way to slice the meeting up in a way that's, you know, respectful. But at the same time, we will get the village's business done then.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Here it up, weirdo, tonight. Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the vouchers be audited and the meeting be adjourned at 9:18 PM? Make it 9:19 PM, as I said it.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Price Bush, trustee Raymond, discussion.
Yeah, good, good.
All in favor? Opposed? Have a good night, everybody. We'll see you soon.
Frankie, the other thing I noticed, I forgot to mention, is it looks like Captain is getting court... Are they getting court repayments?
I'm not sure if they're requesting it there or not.